That's a great idea.
Here.
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Waters?
Stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please. That's what I want to do. Amen? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Mr. Moore, do you have an introduction today?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to announce, as most of you know, Hard Rock Hotel and Casino Sioux City has hired a new general manager, Jim Frankie, and I invited Jim to come to our meeting so that he could meet the council members. I understand you've already met the mayor. Because, part of the reason is because Hard Rock has been such an excellent corporate partner with the city, and when they hire a new chief in charge, we want to meet you and get to know you, and you get to know us. Jim Frankie, prior to accepting Hard Rock's GM position, worked as the senior vice president of operations and general manager with Warner Hospitality in Las Vegas. Prior to that, Jim spent 14 years leading the Ameristar Casino Resort Spa in St. Charles, Missouri, where he spent a decade as senior vice president, general manager. We want to welcome you back to Sioux City, and just thought I'd invite you in, Rhonda Capron, Alex Waters, and I'm Dan Moore, and you've met them.
We had that little lunch the other day.
Our city attorney is Nicole DeBois. Our clerk today is Heidi. City manager on the far left, Bob Padner. I left your last name out because I didn't want to...
The gang's all here.
Yeah. Heidi Ferrence.
Well, thank you for the welcome. I appreciate it. I am glad being 1998 to 2000 as the director of operations when Argosy Casino, or yeah, Argosy Casinos bought the Sioux City Sioux back at that time. I loved the community, so when I had the opportunity to come back here, I jumped at it. Warner Hospitality, I worked for them for the last year, and I actually worked with a lot of them that used to work with Ameristar Casinos. So I'm glad, I know the character of the individuals within Warner. I know, I've talked to a few people here and are so supportive of Warner Hospitality and Hard Rock and what they've done with the city, and we want to continue that, and I want to continue that relationship and other values of doing the right thing, inclusion, collaboration, just being a part of the community is what they're about, and I want to make sure that we continue it.
Thank you.
Just thrilled to be here, and if there's anything that I can do, give me a call. I'll make sure I get my contact information to you all, and thank you for the welcome.
Thank you.
You thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Good day.
We do have some students, I see. Where are you guys from? What school?
We're from Morningside College.
Morningside College, I think that's a morning...
Oh, yeah, like you didn't know that.
That's great. I just wanted to double check, Pete. I'm just double checking.
What class are we here for?
Yeah, if one of you want to come to the microphone and say why you're here, or just for what class, or anything.
All right, so we're here actually as part of kind of a new initiative at Morningside. It's called the Second Year Experience, and so it pairs up second-year students and departments with upperclassmen mentors. So these are some of our second-year students and some of our mentors. We're just having a little outing after this. We're going to go have dinner, kind of discuss some things, give everyone some advice and stuff like that.
You want to come down and see Alex in action, huh?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
There it is.
I'm Kailin Robert. I'm a sophomore at Morningside.
You should go to Hard Rock.
Thank you.
We just had something...
Perfect. Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
A welcome.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll go to consent agenda, which is items two through 12C today that you can consider then items pass unanimously unless a council member asks for a vote. Please come forward if you want to speak on that, any item on the agenda, or at the end on their citizen concerns, but remember to state your name and address. For the record, we will be adhering to a three-minute rule today. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is a reading of the city council minutes of March 12th and 13th, 2018. Three is a resolution declaring the intent under Treasury Regulation 1.15-2 to issue debt to reimburse the city for expenses. Four is a resolution approving submission of an IEDA application for targeted jobs withholding tax credit program for the Sioux City Brick and Tile property at 310 South Floyd Boulevard. And for those of you that talk to legislators, you might want to tell them that this project probably could have gone to Dakota Dunes just as easily as it could have gone to Sioux City, and without the tax credits, it probably would have gone there. So we need to continue to push to have that re-upped.
Mayor, I just, I also want to state Sioux City Brick and Tile, been in Sioux City for, what, well over a century now?
Yes.
And, you know, this is an exciting project. I can't tell you how happy I am that you're going to redevelop in Sioux City, stay in Sioux City and call, and continue to call this home. And I want to thank you for all of the studying that you did, the time and effort and resources that you put into this to make it a very sound decision. And I think you'll find that we on the city side will do everything we can to make everything that's put together work for you, and I'm just thrilled that you're staying in Sioux City. And like the mayor said, because of certain programs that we have now that may be threatened to go away, that will hurt us. And I'm really glad that that program helped, along with a lot of other factors that came into play for this. So I want to thank you publicly for all you've done for the city of Sioux City and our community, and I really mean that. Sioux City Brick and Tile, you're solid, you've got a great reputation, you've got a great product. That's what's made your business so successful over the years, and it's a pleasure to have you as a corporate citizen and a partner as well.
I agree, and I also want to acknowledge Mr. Gerhardt. He's their attorney for Sioux City Brick and Tile. You're in good hands. You're in good hands.
I thought you were going to come in on his golf game or something.
Oh, no. Well, he did once...
If it's anything like his golf game or...
He did once hit his golf ball about that far away on a par three and got a brand-new driver, but he wouldn't share it.
He just never forgotten that.
No, yeah. Well, it was left-handed, too, so it's... Thank you. We appreciate you staying in Sioux City. Five is a resolution authorizing payment to Lazard Contracting for the Morningside Avenue reconstruction project. I need to abstain on that. Six is a resolution authorizing fire rescue to apply for the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant from the Department of Homeland Security for 600 smoke alarms. Seven's a resolution fixing the amount of the assessed, to be assessed and adopting a scheduled assessments for the 2017 right-of-way tree trimming program. Eight are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the airport arch pipe extension project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Tyson Event Center lighting project retrofit. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving renewal option one with HICAM for the one year for the purchase of coagulant. B is a resolution approving renewal option number one for Hawkins, with Hawkins for one year for the purchase of potassium permagnate. C is a resolution approving renewal option number one with KERS for one year for the purchase of sodium permagnate. I probably should have taken a little more chemistry in college. D is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Cartus Manufacturing to install fencing at the Sioux Gateway Airport. E is a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Development and Minimum Assessment Agreements with TMS and KV to change the legal description from 3809 Stadium Drive to 4050 Stadium Drive. Ten are purchases, purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Suman Concrete Standard Ready Mix for concrete product for the Public Works and Utility Department. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to DPC Industries for sodium hypochlorite solution for water treatment plant. C is a resolution awarding purchase order to Hogland Bus Company for one light duty ADA compliant bus for transit. D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Hogland Bus Company for one light duty ADA compliant bus for transit. E is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Hogland Bus Company for one light duty ADA compliant bus for transit. Eleven are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forth if you have any questions. Twelve are receipt of minutes. See the list come forth if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? We're voting electronically, I'm assuming. Thank you. Passes five zero thirteen, a hearing resolution approving plans and specs for the Bridgeport West Improvements Harbor Drive Realignment Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero fourteen, is a resolution approving the development and minimum assessment agreements with the Warrior Hotel Limited Partnership, the property at 505 and 525 Sixth Street, 620 and 621 Nebraska Street. I'll move that.
Second.
When are we starting construction, gentlemen?
Yeah, I was wondering if an update maybe could be given.
Guys, from Sioux City Brick and Tile left, I wanted to say, I know a house has a Sioux City Brick and Tile roof on, put on in 1925. So there you go. We built things good in Sioux City, and they're supposed to last a long time, and the two projects that are before you tonight regarding the Warrior Hotel and the Davidson Building are two that I think epitomize that, built by Sioux City leaders long ago, and they lasted through a lot of strife and plans of different sorts. And we're here tonight because of the work by the city council, city staff, and certainly not for restoration St. Louis. We're happy to be able to get to this stage of the development, which is one of many stages, and the people on the council and city legal know, we're finishing up financing with these projects. Tax credit commitments have been committed to, subject to award from the state, and we're working on the final stages of the first mortgage financing. So to answer the question, we should be underway sometime by midsummer. That's the plan at this stage, barring any other delays like we had with the change in the tax code at the end of the year and things such as that, so...
Lou, are you talking this summer or next summer?
Oh, no, this summer.
Okay, thank you.
At a certain age, you've got to move ahead of things.
I think so, yeah.
You know, at the age where 75th birthday is a good time to start a new project.
I didn't know if you were saying the age of yourself or the building and so...
Buildings are marginally older than I am. Right?
Well, we're excited about it, so we hope that you do get started this summer. That'll be great.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thanks so much for all the assistance, and Nicole, thanks for all the extra time you put in getting the EDA out, and we know that was no small task, and staff has been great to work with on this. So Bob, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you, too, Lou, because it's been over 40 years coming. I know that it's been kind of an eyesore, I want to say, downtown for quite a while, and, you know, you've gone through many phases trying to figure out what to do with this building, and it's finally come to, here we are, and I'm real excited about it because, you know, the city has one way or another way we could have went, and, you know, we're doing the tax credits. It's a great thing. Our other option was red-tag it, and the taxpayers would have been having to take care of that, which would have been millions of dollars.
Been there, done that, it didn't work.
Yeah, exactly. So you know what?
We'd prefer not to go back to those times.
Exactly, and it's been a great project that has finally come to, come to the city that's going to be a great addition.
Well, I think especially with, as I said, restoration St. Louis and Amrit Gill and his crew couldn't be here today, but, you know, they're just selected by U.S. News and World Report for their two hotels in Davenport, the current and the Blackhawk being the two best hotels in Iowa, and so we want to be right there with the third one when we open in 2020, so...
Exactly.
Thanks so much again for all your help.
State your name and address, even though you're more famous than anybody.
Yeah, right, right, right. Louis Weinberg, 3905 Country Club Boulevard, Sioux City, Iowa. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up.
Thank you, Lou.
Thanks, Lou. Thanks a lot.
Thanks. Fifteen's a resolution approving a loan modification. Oh, we got a vote? I thought we did.
Nicole, I have a conflicted interest.
Passes four zero one, Mr. Moore abstains. Fifteen's a resolution approving a loan modification agreement with Hickory Lane Partnership, a subordination agreement with Centennial Mortgage and a HUD amendment to restrictive covenants with Hickory Lane Partnership for Shire One and Two Apartments at 4236 Hickory Lane. I'll move that.
Second.
What was that?
I was hesitant. I thought Rhonda was going to jump in there.
That's okay.
He's right in the middle of that. I was like...
Jill Londer, Shide Neighborhood Services Manager. I thought I'd just kind of give a quick overview of the history of the loan and explain a little bit about what the information that we had in the RCA for presentation today. So back in the late 90s, early 2000s, the city received a lot more home funds than we do right now. We received about a $175,000 a year. Right now, we're about $330,000 a year. And so in that time period, we did provide a lot of loans for rental projects in Sioux City, and now some of those are going to be coming due, either they were already due or they're coming due within the next few years. And because we have such a less amount of home funds each year that the city receives, we are really looking to the future and making sure that we're able to capture those loan payoffs when they do come up. We have had, in the last five years or so, we've had about six similar requests to restructure loans. The reason why we recommended denial is because those other restructures we have denied, except for one, they did provide a large payoff amount, a large portion of the original loan, and so therefore we pushed out that sunset date of the loan. And so, again, we recommended denial to stay consistent with what we've done with the other loans that we have in our portfolio, and to ensure that we do get that money back and currently offer as a city, including our Down Payment Assistance Program and also our security deposit program.
Thank you.
Good job.
And then they're going to speak. Thank you. I have to state my name again for the record.
We're all right? We do?
Yeah.
Lou Weinberg, 3905 Country Club Boulevard, Sioux City, Iowa. I appreciate the staff's input on this, but in affordable housing projects, it's very seldom that you find two that are the same, and that is because of a whole mix of financing that makes these possible. What we asked the staff to consider in this case was a new subordination agreement, which is required when you put a new HUD loan on a project. The new loan in this case will not require any additional home funds or any other funds by the city of Sioux City whatsoever. It'll allow us to spend approximately $450,000 in improvements on the project. The city presently has a home mortgage on the property, which of the mortgages, there's a first mortgage with a private mortgage company, there's a second mortgage with a state of Iowa, and you guys are third. So I think we all understand where you are in the priority of payment. We have been making payments, as do annually, on this loan and reducing the amount owed. There have not been payments made on the state loan, paid interest only on that. Their loan matures in 2033. So as a part of this process, and the new HUD mortgage, HUD said we want to have both loans have the same termination date. So staff's right, yours comes due in 2021, but typically what has happened when these come due is a renegotiation would happen between the owner and the city to either extend or re-admiritize or do something like that with the loan. Typically, they have not been paid off. We appreciate the city wanting to use this refinancing we're going through to try and recoup their money, but quite frankly, this protects the city because if there was ever default or foreclosure in the project, they would be on line to be, have their funds repaid back to HUD. In other words, HUD would come to them and say, "Okay, there's $100,000 left on this loan, pay us." It went into default. With the new subordination agreement, the city has no liability for repayment to HUD. So you've reduced your risk, and what we're doing is putting you in the same position as Iowa Finance Authority, mainly because HUD required that, and we think it's a good idea. So I'd be happy to answer any questions of you and staff regarding it.
I do have a question. Is this a balloon at 2033?
Right. Your original loan was 50 years with a balloon at 2021, and we're asking to be extended to 2033. We're, as we stated before, we'd be happy to sit down and negotiate either different payments or some sort of additional payment later on, but right now, we can't do that because of timing. We're supposed to close this by the end of the month. For example, we haven't fixed the rate on our loan yet. It floats out there in the market until you have everything in place, being the subordination agreements, which are the last thing. So in the last two days, they raised the interest rate on the federal level. That basically reduced our loan by probably $80,000 because of the hike in the interest rates that'll have to go to paying first mortgage interest. So we're up against it. We need to get the job done, and we want to put the improvements into the project, so we're asking the council to, again, subordinate their position to the HUD mortgage.
So, okay, so really what we're doing, the money that we would, the balloon that we would have at 2021, we would just take that money and just put it, balloon it at 2033?
Well, it would be paid off less by then, by 30.
Well, yeah, whatever the balance is at that time, and...
It wouldn't be the 185 at the same time.
Right, okay.
No.
Labonte wasn't paying any principal on his, was he?
Some yes, some no.
Mostly no. I remember it well. Mostly no, and you stood at that microphone at that particular time and said we should forgive.
Still provided $110,000 cash towards the principal and interest as a part of that refinance.
But that wasn't your original recommendation.
His request was to restructure the loan without a payment, and we negotiated that with him as part of the council action.
After the council sent it back to you.
Mm-hmm. And then after that, we had two requests that we denied based on council action, previous action from the one in 2014. We had another one in 2017 that we denied, and then we had another one also in 2017.
In the 2014, was he making monthly payments or annual payments?
We have annual payments due, Call Terminal. They had not made any payments prior to that, and they started making $7,000 annual payments.
These guys have been making payments all along. He didn't make any payments at all.
Not on Call Terminal, correct.
And the other question I had, Jill, that I, when I spoke with you on the phone, I didn't think to ask or wasn't thinking...
Sure.
Is this fairly different due to HUD asking to kind of make them collaborate or, you know, be more in sync, and then also reduce our exposure? And is that kind of different circumstances somewhat?
I think it depends. Some of the other, I would say that is different, but we have had requests to restructure because developers were looking at low-income housing tax credits and other things where they felt like they needed a restructure to make that happen. So the, Lou's right, I mean, the reasons why they've been asked to refinance are different, but the funding source is the same from the city, is home funds.
So HUD is asking that these two be, or all of these be, well, this loan, be pushed back to 2033 as well?
Extended out to 2033.
In our conversations with the HUD representative, it really, you know, we asked anticipating if there were council questions, if, you know, does it have to be 2033? Can it be 2030, or 2025, or, for example, and what they told us is that would have to open up their negotiation process again with Lou if they wanted to go down that route.
They issued a mortgage commitment to us to ensure a mortgage for the project, and one of the conditions of that is that both loans have the same maturity date. So it really makes no difference to us, but it did to them, and that's what they put in their commitment. So they've told us, and you don't have a copy of that mortgage commitment, I don't think, but they told us that the only way that they would close on the loan is they both mature in 2033.
So Jill, what does this do to the home loan program? That's what concerns me.
Sure. So as I mentioned before, kind of in the heyday of home, we were getting, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars a year in federal funds into Sioux City. Now that program has been cut over the years, we get about 330 a year, and that's declining. What we use that for primarily is our popular Down Payment Assistance Program. That helps first-time home buyers buy homes here in Sioux City. We also do a security deposit. We partner with the Housing Division to provide security deposit assistance for those that just need that extra step in order to be housed and that extra resource. We have, with some of the loan payoffs, reinvested that into new rental projects, but to answer your question in a more succinct way, we don't know what's going to happen with home. Our concern is if it ends up being cut, you know, 100% or even more, having the funds back in '23 would allow us to continue on those programs just a little bit longer.
So the recipients of home loans, when they make their payments, that money goes back into the home funds?
Yes.
And that's the money you use to be able to do other programs?
Right.
Well, along with whatever allocation they get from the feds each year.
Yes.
Along with, excuse me?
Funds that they get annually from the government.
Yes, but those are declining.
Jill's saying if those go away, we have to use these funds.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, away this year, but there still is a Congress, thank God, between us and somebody in charge, because the HUD funds are still with us. But in his budget and the president's budget, all of it was going away.
Yep. 2018, and now it's proposed as 2019 budget, yeah, CDPG and Home, he proposes to cut 100%.
Contrary, Congress still loves these funds because they help the recipients in their districts. Doesn't matter whether you're in a rich district or a poor. HUD funds help all communities. So I'm not saying they're not going to go away, but they didn't go away as quickly as the president thought they should go away.
Well, their 2019 budget is actually October 1st, 2018, right?
They passed that. It's in this, the budget that they're in did not see a decrease in that. In fact, it saw an increase.
Yeah, we're operating under a continuing resolution till 20, or March 23rd, so hopefully they pass an FY '18 budget by then.
But in the proposed budget, where 10% more went for the Pentagon, there's more money in that budget for your programs.
Mm-hmm, true.
It didn't all go to build a wall. Although we build a lot of them up in neighborhoods we shouldn't have, but what the heck?
And so Jill, are you comfortable with, I mean, since he has had a good track record of paying all of this on and continuing on, of entering negotiations, or are we okay if we push back that balloon date to kind of allow the reinvestment in these other projects? What are your, obviously, I totally understand why you had to submit the denial for consistency. I do understand and I respect that, but what are your, since he has been...
Yeah.
...a great partner, I would say, in this? I mean, I...
I think one thing I picked on that, picked up on that Lou mentioned was perhaps revisiting the terms at a later date. So I guess my request is if it is council's desire to approve pushing that payment out to 2033, that it's also accompanied by some direction to work with Lou to further take a look at those loan terms, to get some more proceeds in earlier.
We'll work to try and get something done before the next payment, next, this coming December, so we'd be happy to.
Okay.
When's the next payment?
December.
December?
That's what I'd be comfortable with as well.
Okay.
If that's all right with...
That's fair enough.
Is that something that would require...
Probably a separate motion.
An amendment, or...
I'm looking at the loan modification agreement right now. It doesn't look like the payment terms are changing. It's the deadline that's changing in the draft.
Well, you can always prepay, though.
In front of me.
I don't think, there's no preclusion on prepayment.
So the approval today would have to be on the promise that we would bring that back at a later date?
I mean, ideally, if we had more time, I would recommend deferring it to negotiate that in the front end, but I understand that there's a timeframe here, too. So if you approve it, it's as is. I mean, that's where it is right now. It would have to be the parties to open it back up, but that isn't a guarantee.
Have to hope that Lou's an honest man.
And that's not what I am implying.
How quickly we go downhill.
Yeah, exactly.
And Lou just committed to doing that, so...
And we trust Lou. How you like that?
Well, yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right, well, we'll...
He won't be disappointed, let's put it that way.
All right. All right.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else be heard? Thank you, Jill.
So are we voting on the denial? I mean, so?
No, that staff recommended denial, but the motion always is what it is.
Okay.
We're approving it.
So if you vote yes, you're voting for it.
Approve the balloon to go to 2033.
If you vote yes, you're voting for it.
In addition to subordination agreement, two agreements for approval, loan modification agreement and a subordination agreement.
So we're getting more money, you say?
What's that?
You'd say we're getting more money from HUD?
Yeah. That was the compromise, that, that if the Pentagon budget got increased, the Democrats got more money for domestic programs. Am I not correct on that, ladies? With the Democrat, Republicans wanted more defense funds, and with that, the Democrats won more domestic funding.
Yes, and, but that has not trickled down. They haven't approved that yet. Yes, but true, yes.
That's the, that's the budget deal as it stands today. They're nego, they're voting on it, but that's the budget deal as it stands today.
Yep.
Well, I, I'll be honest, I'm, I am concerned that there'll be people who need the money that we won't have if we extend this balloon out to 2033. That's, but, but I know that Lou will meet, and hopefully, if we get more money, that's even better. But if we don't, then maybe we need to revisit it, but does that sound okay to you?
Yes, I think that's fair.
Okay. Thank you.
Who asked the vote? Yeah.
Pete.
We're done. Passes four zero to one. Mr. Moore abstained. Are there any citizens to be heard in the audience today? If so, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll go to council. Mr. Gretkin.
None, none whatsoever.
That's what I like to hear.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, one thing.
You had a good time.
Oh, see, give him a little time.
I just, I just want to publicly, I'm not telling you her age, but I'm going to acknowledge my wife's birthday today.
Happy birthday, Donna.
Happy birthday to Donna.
Yep.
You taking her out to dinner?
Yes, and we'll get an early start.
That's why, that's the only reason you want to go quick here today.
You know, oh, no. I'll stay as long as you want to stay.
I wanted to go fifteen minutes ago.
You go with the college students to dinner.
Pardon me?
Join the college students.
There you go. Hard rock, that's where they're going, the hard rock.
If they had blue and gold, maybe so.
Pete.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Well, I do have a couple of things, Mr. Mayor.
All good.
All good. It's good. First of all, I want to thank our city crews. This weekend, when we had that ice storm, I, my neighbor's tree fell on my driveway and it went across Thirty Fourth Street. And I called the boys up, and they were out there within, it was quick. Well, we had to get the street open.
Of course.
So they did an awesome job. I want to thank them. Second, I want to congratulate my team Dakota Westland for winning the NIA National Championship Game against the mayor's team Concordia.
I want to remind Rhonda, we beat them three out of four times this year.
It doesn't count, Bob, you know that. It's, it's the...
It comes down to the ship there.
Yeah, Jesus, you know what? They were all close games. I want to remind him, though, the three games that my team did lose. And, but you know what? It doesn't matter because they won the big one. That's what it's all about. You would say that about your Bandits, right? If they lost three times and then, then they won the championship?
It happened last year, and then we lost in the, in the division playoff. Thanks for reminding me.
I did want to, I did want to put that on you. Okay, the other thing is, I did go to the Bandits game yesterday, and I want to tell you, I had a great time. I took my son, and we visited with a lot of people, and, and it was a good game. Came down to the Bandits won, I think thirty-five to twenty-five or thirty...
Forty-five, thirty-five.
Forty-five, thirty-five, yeah. So I would encourage everyone to go see it. And I can't, I can't usually do the Saturday night games because I got to work, but it just happened that it was a Sunday afternoon. I wish you would have more of those, Bob.
Uh, did you see that crowd? We're having no more Sunday games.
I, there was, well, okay, I understand that, but you know, you still had a good...
Yeah, well, I can, I can't stand it.
Well, okay.
One's all, one of those is all you can have a season, so.
And one more thing I want to add about that.
You should have invited your boys.
I asked where you were. Where were you? He was going out of town.
I didn't, I didn't get a text.
Okay, well, you're probably...
Here's the story. Rhonda's the only one that had money for tickets. The rest of them, I didn't offer free ones, so they didn't show up.
Okay. Here's the best part of that story. Now, wait a minute. Bob, you have to, you have to hear this. This is a funny one. So I go up to pay for my tickets, right? So the girl that was giving me my ticket, she says, "Do you work for the city?" I said, "Uh, yeah. I like to think that I do." So I got a little discount also.
And the wellness program and the, and the Parks and Recreation Board get a little stifled, too.
That's why I feel that I should support the Bandits and buy my own tickets. That's what it's all, I'm okay with that. I don't like to call up and ask...
But we appreciate it.
I know. I don't like to call up and ask for free. Okay, Jeff Hansen. Surprise, I got one more thing. Did Nick Hogan call you by any chance?
Who?
Nick Hogan.
No, ma'am.
He has, okay, he's looking at some land to, to build on. And I gave him your cell phone, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Okay, anyway.
I have not heard from him, but...
Okay. Nick Hogan, I know that, uh, your brother's out there listening, so come on. Call, let's get something moving on. That's it.
Don't go far away.
Okay.
Yeah.
Exactly. Don't go far away. We all have something for you.
Oh, God. Okay, I'm, I'm good.
Oh, boy.
A couple of things that I just wanted to touch on, I, like input meetings recently. Next step is, that I really am putting a call out for some assistance, is we've had some good traction, I think, on social media. There is an online survey that went out. Actually, it went to all of our student inboxes, as well as our faculty and staff and things like that. And so if any students, if you all can make sure that you fill it out, please, and make sure that your peers do as well. It's something that means a lot to me because the whole point of why I got involved in, in politics and in Sioux City and volunteering is because I believe that our, that we're going to be even better in the future and that Sioux City is on the cusp of some great things, and this really helps us plan for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. And so you taking part of that and saying, "I would really like to see this in Sioux City," or "I came from this city, and I really miss that here in Sioux City." You should think about incorporating that. Like, these are ideas that literally would be put into play for the future planning of our city and our community. So I hope that all those listening and those in the audience, if you please could take five to ten minutes to fill out that survey, that would be great. We need, we need a lot more of the online survey input. I really hope to see that number increase over the coming weeks, so. But thanks, Jeff, for all the work that you've been doing on that, and I know we'll continue to reaching out to groups as well. The next thing I would bring your attention to is thank all of those individuals that were able to call the odor hotline. We talked about that, and it sounds like city staff has been working diligently to kind of get that issue resolved. So I appreciate city staff working on that as well. So thank you. And then the other thing in, in line with kind of that odor complaints hotline is report a pothole. There's in the same type of a system. If you want to, if you see a pothole in your neighborhood or in your, you're driving down the street and you want to, make sure that you pull safely over. And I believe that in the same format, isn't there an online number and an email and kind of formatting that you can go on and report?
That thing must be really whizzing right now. Why would you have to report it? There's not a street that doesn't have a bunch right now.
I talked to, I talked to Pat Simons down there, and I know they're working hard to kind of keep up. And, and every time you send that email, it goes to his email, and he puts it on the list and prioritizes. He said he drives out and looks at them personally to kind of try to prioritize with the ones that are, that are really affecting travel.
You know, here, I got to say something about potholes. The only good thing about these potholes everybody is that it slows people down when they're driving. What's wrong with that? That's all I got to say.
There you go. I hope we're looking at something different in potholes and putting it down and having it pop out two days later, but I think they were supposed to be, some of these are big enough. You could pour concrete in them and they would hold.
Yeah.
Mr. Moore, do you have anything for the good of the order?
Uh...
Oh, wait, you've not done?
Let's see.
Something about morning side college students.
Yeah, right. Well, I want to thank everyone for being here. I think the second year experience program is something that, that has great promise. I'm excited for the future of this program and, and happy to see everyone in the audience, as well as we have a couple professors in the audience as well. So thanks for bringing this crew down. We really, I really appreciate it. Anything to get more morning side people in this chamber, I tell you what. I really appreciate that. But no, the last thing I would just say is, today is actually the last day to register for it, but I think that I might be making the trip down. We'll see if it's able to work in my schedule. But Young Professionals of Iowa, down day at the Capitol, so we'll go down. The lieutenant mayor's going to be with, or lieutenant governor, not as important as lieutenant mayor or someone, you know, mayor pro temp. But the lieutenant governor's going to join us and then, as well as some of our local representatives, for the day at the Capitol. So I'll go down and talk about backfill. You have, you can imagine.
I sent Mr. Bertrand a note this week and said, "We are all for doing away with the backfill. Go ahead and take it away from us, but give us back the property taxes you took away from us. You can't have it both ways." We'll see how far that one gets, but why would we not be for that?
And I wanted to ask him, but he didn't show up for the legislative forum, so, and he didn't answer my emails yet, so hopefully he's listening.
You'd be for that, wouldn't you, Donna?
I'm for it.
When are you going?
So that actually is, the registration is open till the end of the day, but that day is taking place on Wednesday down at the Capitol, so hopefully I'll be able to make that trip down. But we'll see. Taylor, I better see you there. You want to go? There you go, buddy. Our Professionals of Iowa, something that I'm pretty proud of, so. Anyway, that's Wednesday. That's all I got.
Excellent. Thanks. On behalf of the mayor and the council, last week, I attended Opportunities Unlimited and delivered the proclamation that the mayor had announced on Monday for Brain Injury Awareness Month, and they were very appreciative of it, and I think they're, they're another excellent corporate citizen that we have in our community, and they, they serve a lot of people, and, and they do an excellent job. So I, I did that on Wednesday. Last Saturday, on behalf of the council and the mayor, I attended the Warming Shelter Community Meeting that they had from eight AM till eleven o'clock. And I just want to point out, and Jeff, this is kind of what I want you to hear, too, so that maybe you can be thinking about this. I just want to point out some facts, interesting facts, that they had brought up during that meeting. They're coming, concluding their fifth season, so they've been, they've had the Warming Shelter for five seasons. They operate from November one to April thirtieth, and they've served, they have been open over approaching fifty thousand nights. And of course, their mission is if they don't lose any life due to the extreme cold, then they've accomplished their mission. And, and they have done that. What else I found interesting is they said that over eighty percent of their population is born and raised in the Suland area, and that, I thought that was really an interesting statistic. Another thing is that twenty percent of their population goes to work every day. They have jobs and, and are working people. There was discussion, they, they wanted the community, and, and by the way, our chief of police was there, and he did an outstanding job, and, and our former chief was also there, but our current chief did just an outstanding job of representing the police department and their concerns and, and really summarized issues very well. But Jeff, what I wanted to pay attention to is that, so the board was there, the, the Warming Shelter Board was there to take community input, and, and I was there on behalf of the city, and I was proud to be there. Had, I had probably more questions than I did thoughts on going forward, but they were looking at, and they currently have a day shelter. And the day shelter is located on West Seventh Street, so there was some discussion about, is that compatible? Just to kind of lay it on the table, is that, is a day shelter, and, and a night shelter, is it compatible with the surrounding properties? And I got to thinking during that meeting how maybe that might fit into the strategic planning process that the community is looking towards. So you might keep that in mind for a day shelter. They also talked about whether that could be, or should be combined, could be combined, under one roof for both the day and the, and the...
They're two different entities, though.
Night shelter. Well, but there, the board that was there, they, they were discussing...
I think it's a great idea.
They were discuss, well, they were discussing the concept, I mean, because there are whole, there are whole different challenges from day and...
Right.
And night. But the aware, and, and they, and they serve about, in rough numbers, they, they serve about two hundred people. So I, what I have found, in my comments to the board, quite frankly, is that, is that this community supports what they're doing. We trust what they're doing. They're very deliberate. That board is very deliberate in what they do with the Warming Shelter, and they are very deliberate and very thoughtful as far as making decisions that will affect not only the population they serve, but the entire Sioux City community. And, and that's a good thing, and I think that's a real positive. So I just wanted to get it out there because they're doing good things. They've been very successful with the Warming Shelter, which is the night shelter, the day shelter. There are going to be some issues that we need to look at. But I just thought, well, how would that tie in with what we're doing with the strategic plan? So I wanted to bring that up. And then lastly, picking up on what Alex had said about odor control and complaints and that kind of thing, I want to thank Mark Sims. You did a media discussing that, and you represented Sioux City very well, so I just want to thank you for that. And I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Something changed with the odor, because I did drive by Saturday, and it wasn't as bad, so they must be doing something different. Would thank them for that, the industry. And at my age, I forgot to take notes and don't remember what else I wanted to say, so I'm going to...
You had something from, no, you had something from Mr. Hanson.
Jeff and Marty.
Oh, boy.
I got a call, and I know Rhonda did, from Mr. Lindblum. "How are we doing on the appraisal?" I know you're still not very excited about some things, but how are we doing?
Need to check on the status of the appraisal. As you know, it was ordered for the entire site. I don't have the exact return date. I know we gave them very limited days to have it back to us, fewer than what we normally require, but I will check and report back tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. I move we adjourn.
And I just, I just want to tell Dan, thank you.
Your wife's birthday, no.
I know. I just want to tell, I just want to tell Dan, thank you, because I've been attending those meetings for the last several years, but Joe Twidwell and I spoke briefly about the council or council representation being there, and I was out of town, but thank you very much for going and attending. The, the work they do is really, really important and makes a huge difference in the lives of, of the numbers of people that you mentioned, so thanks for attending. I really...
You're welcome.
One more thing, too.
Well, and I was complimentary of, of the council. Last week, when you were gone, I talked about, you know, when one of us attends a meeting, we're, I, I don't know about the rest of you, I think I, I know, but, but when I'm there, when I speak, and a lot of times you've seen me publicly speak, I always mention the mayor, and I mention the three of you, because I'm there on behalf of the city council. And if there's a meeting that they need all of us there, I would hope that they would give it, you know, call us, make sure we get it in our calendar, that kind of thing. So what I want the public to know is just because maybe all five of us aren't there, one of us, we, counts a lot.
Yep.
Because anything I do, I'm representing the city, I'm representing the mayor, and I'm representing the council, and I try to carry that publicly. So you're very welcome, but I know, Pete, you've gone to a number of meetings, as Rhonda and Alex and the mayor have, individually, where we all couldn't make it. I mean, if we went to every meeting, you know, I'd, I'd be out of a job.
Yeah, absolutely.
My day job and...
But, but this is, this has been a three-year commitment so far, the Suland Street Project, trying to find a solution to homeless and transients, to provide them with shelter. And, and the day shelter is, as a matter of fact, is located at the Soup Kitchen, which is in the five hundred block of West Seventh?
Right, Seventh.
I'm guessing?
Yeah.
So I know they were looking at a super shelter concept that was, I think, being started in South Dakota Pier or Rapid City, and I, I don't know how that has turned out, but, but any, any help the city can give and to the work that they're doing would be fantastic. So thank you very much.
And I also, I talked to two policemen yesterday when I, when I was at the Bandits game, and, and that was, our big conversation was...